I welcome you to this September meeting of the North Charleston Planning Commission. I'm Sharon Reed. The Chair of the Planning Commission and I've already mentioned the sign in sheets if you wish to speak during the public hearings. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the meeting and to call this meeting to order. Uh, the first item is consideration of the minutes from the August eleventh meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All who approve the minutes as published. Please designate with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the minutes from the August meeting are approved as published. Uh, the.
Yep, uh, next item on the agenda is uh introduction of new planning commission members. Uh, we have uh Mr. James Crawford and uh Mr. Matthew Scharf here. Uh, this is their first meeting of Plan Commission and uh they will be with us uh for the next four years.
At least.
Yep, at least, uh, to be reappointed as uh. So, um, at that point, I appreciate your service and look forward to getting started. Congratulations.
Welcome, thank you, thank you.
Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Alright, we have before us a recommendation to council proposed resort rezoning. Six seven one four and sixty six eighty eight Dorchester Road. You'll hear the staff report.
So this is uh proposed zoning of properties addressed as sixty seven fourteen, sixty six eighty eight Dorchester Road, Charleston County TMS number four zero six. Zero 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 four. And uh B five four from B two general business to R two multifamily residential. Uh, these are located in Council District one. You can see the subject properties here highlighted in blue. The properties are currently uh wooded vacant lots. As stated, the current zoning is B two. And the general business properties to the north and south are B two as well. R two across M one to the east. Comprehensive plan, the subject property is designated as employment center within the mixed use corridor of Dorchester Road. Employment center areas generally benefit from proximity to one another with ease of access to supportive services and residential areas to relieve congestion. The proposed R two zoning is consistent with both the corridor and neighborhood development designations which promote a cohesive integration of residential and commercial uses in close proximity. This is the subject property. Uh, the parcels are currently wooded and vacant undeveloped at this time. Adjacent properties, the surrounding areas comprised of varying businesses along Dorchester Road and a mix of residential uses. The surrounding area has a mix of apartments, townhomes, and across Dorchester Road is the Lake Ashley Manufacturing Home Community. Staff's recommendation is approval. The mixed use corridor designation supports a combination of multifamily, commercial, office, retail, and light industrial uses. Given the subject property's location along a major transportation corridor, the proximity of other residential uses and the support from the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed zoning of the property. From the two general business to R two multifamily residential.
Alright, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Hearing none is the applicant here.
Yes ma'am.
Wish to come.
Charlie Solmanson, I'm a local guy. Been here for all my life and my family used to have a personal representative for thirty five years, so if you have any questions, I'm here.
Are you related to Keatsum's?
My daddy, was my daddy.
I remember him, I remember him well.
You remember the representative, don't you?
Yes. Okay, um, this is a duly advertised public hearing. So if there are those who wish to make comments, your comments need to be limited to three minutes. But we welcome your comments and no one signed in to speak, but if you wish to come forward, you can do so now. The public hearing is now closed. And we will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of this rezoning request. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Uh, motion on the floor is approval. Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Scharf? Mr. Duan?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
That motion carries, this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input at the Public Safety Committee of City Council on October sixteen.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is rezoning requests. Four thousand one O'Hare Avenue and un- unaddressed property.
Alright.
You'll hear the staff report.
The proposed zoning of the property addressed as four thousand O'Hare, Charleston County TMS four seven zero one six zero 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 six three. And the unaddressed property then Charleston County TMS four seven zero one six zero zero one zero three. From R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential in Council District one. The existing uh property is a single family home and a wooded vacant lot. You can see the properties here highlighted in blue on the map. As stated earlier, the properties are currently zoned R one, single family residential. Uh, surrounding properties are R two multifamily residential to the north, south, east, and then there's B two uh to the west. Uh, both directly adjacent uh across the railroad and then across the rural uh side to the west. The subject properties are designated as traditional neighborhood development within the mixed use corridors through avenue. Designation of traditional neighborhood development is applied to areas of the city to provide for annual sustain higher density neighborhoods within uh with smaller lots and a mix of housing types. Comprehensive plan supports the R two zoning for the development in higher density on smaller lots, especially in close proximity to mixed use corridors. You can see that here in the land use map, this, these are the subject properties here. Uh, they are located in the area between Spruell Avenue corridor and former Navy Base. They are currently developed with a single family home and a wooded vacant lot. Adjacent properties uh surrounding are primarily residential in nature. There's a mix of residential uses in the area including single family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and small apartment buildings. Staff is recommending approval, given the subject property's location, the proximity of other residential uses and support from the comprehensive plan, the staff is recommending approval of the proposed zoning of the property. From R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll hear from the applicant.
Sure. My name is John Rice and I'm uh here, thank you all for viewing this, for your support, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for, from, for the applicant? Okay, thank you sir. This is a duly advertised public hearing, so if there is anyone present who wishes to make comments. Three minute comments, you're welcome to come forward now. Alright, hearing none, this public hearing is closed. And we will entertain a motion. Is there a motion regarding approval or disapproval of this rezoning request?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we grant approval, recommend approval of this rezoning request. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion on the floor is a recommendation of approval. Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Scharf?
Aye.
Mr. Duan?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries, uh, this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input at the Public Safety Committee of City Council on October sixteen.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is request for rezoning North Red Avenue. You'll hear the staff's report.
Oh, uh, sorry, excuse me. The proposed rezoning of the property addressed at fifty six thirty two North Red Avenue, Charleston County TMS number four seven three. One six zero 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 three two, from B one limited business to B two general business, uh, located within Council District ten. Uh, currently the property is being used as a single family home with accessory dwelling. The current zoning is B one seen here, uh, highlighted in blue and the light blue is the B one zoning. All the surrounding zoning is B two, north, east, and west, as well as all the suburbs of North Red Avenue. The comprehensive plan, the subject property is designated as traditional neighborhood development within the mixed use corridor of North Red Avenue. The mixed use corridor supports a mixture of commercial and residential uses which may be combined within a parcel and or stacked within the structure. It is established to sustain a mixture of commercial and residential land uses located within close proximity to one another. You can see that by the hatch where the mixed use corridor is on Red, that's remount. Here is the subject property, you can see the existing single family home. As well as the accessory dwelling units in the rear. The adjacent properties are comprised of varying businesses along North Red. Staff's recommendation is approval, given that the subject property's location, the proximity of other commercial business uses and support from the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed rezoning of the property from B one limited business to B two general business.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? On the staff report at the top, that was just an error, right? About R one. And every place else it says B two, okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
No problem, no problem. I just wondered if it was a part of it that was staying.
That should have been caught.
Okay.
I think that was.
Okay.
Minor, it was my apologies.
No problem, no problem. Are there any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
John Rice again. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Hearing none, this too is an advertised public hearing. So if you wish to come forward, you have three minutes to make your comments. Seeing no movement. This, the floor is now closed and we will entertain a motion.
So staff's recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we request, that we accept staff's recommendation and recommend approval of this request to City Council. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion on the floor is a recommendation of approval. Uh, Mr. Monti?
Aye.
Mr. Bellamy?
Aye.
Mr. Scharf? Mr. Duan?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries for a recommendation of approval. This item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input at the Public Safety Committee of City Council on October sixteen.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is Rivers Avenue. Request for rezoning Rivers Avenue. You'll hear the staff report.
Uh, the proposed request is a rezoning of a portion of the property addressed at forty nine fifty two Rivers Avenue. Charleston County four seven two one six zero zero two one four, from B two general business to R one single family residential in Council District six. This, uh, you can see the property highlighted here in blue. The area in the green hatch is actually the portion of the property that will be rezoned. Currently it's used for commercial business and a single family home as well as a vacant lots. So as I stated before, uh, the property is zone B two, they're requesting to rezone to R one which is directly adjacent. Just the portion highlighted in the green hatch. The frontage along Rivers Avenue would remain B two. Surrounding zoning, north is a mixture of B two general business, R one, same to the south, R R one to the east, west across Rivers. Is, what's that, CRD and F one. The subject properties are designated as mixed use within the mixed use corridor of Rivers Avenue. Mixed use areas generally benefit from proximity to one another providing ease of access to supportive services and residential areas to relieve congestion. Mixed use corridor land use designation is intended to promote development of mixed uses that will enhance access to a wider range of services for nearby neighborhoods. Supports a mixture of commercial and residential uses may, which may be combined within the parcel and or stacked within the structure. The comprehensive plan recommends that uses should be de- designed to be compact. Incorporating a system of open space including sidewalks that provide access to parks, recreation, open space areas, and commercial services. You can see that here on the future land use map. Subject property street views, the subject parcels are currently developed of the commercial business, single family home, and vacant lots. Surrounding areas comprised of varying businesses along Rivers Avenue and predominantly residential uses along Keaton Mall. Staff's recommendation is denial. The mixed use quarter designation supports a combination of multifamily, commercial, office, retail, and light industrial uses. Staff believes that the existing split zoning of B two general business and R one single family residential is appropriate for this area. Accordingly, staff is recommending denial of the proposed rezoning of the property from B two general business to R one single family residential.
Alright, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
So, is the request for denial, because with it currently being uh general business and single family being across the street behind, is the goal for it to become mixed use just to have green space?
The in- intent of the recommendation is that we feel that the B two designation on that portion is a more appropriate use uh for development along Rivers. Uh, it might, at this time, might not be, um, developed to its highest and best use, but by reducing the amount of B two zoning, it will make it harder in the future to redevelop those properties for both types of uses.
The goal is basically for future rezoning.
Yeah, it's, it's to maintain a more of a developable parcel per se. That would be appropriate for uh the Rivers Avenue corridor, which is going to be in the future redeveloped with our, the Low Country Rapid Transit, the bus line. Um, you know, this is going, you need to have parcels of certain size for development to occur properly. There is adequate res- single family residential zoning within the neighborhood that's adjacent to that and this, it doesn't make sense from a, a planning and selling standpoint.
I would also add that, um, R one uses are currently allowed in B two.
Alright, any other questions from commissioners? Again, this is an advertised public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, uh, is the applicant here? You wish to come forward?
An architecture firm working on this project with the client. Uh, so we were just trying to, we were hoping to rezone just that little bit to get a couple more single family homes. You know, the VA hospital just opened up right in the street, the transit will have a stop right there and with Roper Hospital opening up soon. We felt like more single family homes would better serve what's coming to the community. Um, with that being said, that part of B two that's being left, we have full intention of designing a building similar, I guess, something you'd see over on like Houston North Cut or something, like a long. I don't wanna say metal buildings, I know that's like, you know, that's not a bad, that's a bad word, but you know, like a long metal nice building that's going to house, we're thinking like a coffee shop on one end and then doctors' offices that can support those hospitals coming in. and then doctors' offices that can support those hospitals coming in. The coffee shop could also support the neighborhood and surrounding that's coming. Uh with a study that my firm did, just a basic study if with the rezoning of that little piece of that parcel to R one, it still leaves enough room to do that building up front and have enough parking to and green space with all the trees and stuff to, you know, maintain all of that.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I do. Um with um with the proposal you guys are trying to uh push forward, the entrance to into the residential would be in the neighborhood or would be facing Rivers Avenue side?
The they would be off of Fuller Street, so the residences would enter from Rivers onto Fuller Street and then pull into their driveways.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to make comments regarding this request? Seeing no movement, this public hearing is now closed and we will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded that we deny this request or recommend denial to city council of this request. Is there discussion?
I have one more question for staff. Um in an ideal world, what would be what would be the best use for like, what would you rather see placed here instead of single-family or parking?
With B two zoning, uh we would anticipate you know, the potential for a a legitimate mixed-use building potentially with commercial first floor.
And the residential second.
Above uh as you start doing that, the parking aspect that comes into play uh needs to be addressed and by reducing the B two uh footprint, it makes it harder to meet those requirements outside.
Okay, I was I was from reading the packet, I was believing that the purpose was for a little residential on top of that. And I have some more questions.
What's the size of that parcel of land that they're trying to cover?
It it's. The both parcels combined are just under two acres.
And the the part that they want to change as as far as maybe square footage, maybe lot size, do you guys have a size of what that lot would be?
It's point nine five acres is what they're suggesting, just under an acre that would be re-selling. So in acres, forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet are minimum lot size for R one, six thousand square feet. You know, meet the minimum lot width. You can get a couple of lots off of that, a couple additional lots on top of what they already.
Is there other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Uh the motion on the floor is for a recommendation of denial of the proposed rezoning. Mister Monti.
Aye, for denial.
Mister Bellamy.
Aye.
Mister Sharp.
Aye.
Uh Mister Doohan.
Aye.
Mister Crawford.
Aye.
Miss Reed.
Aye.
Uh motion for a recommendation of denial carries. Uh and this item will be forwarded to the mayor and council with the next opportunity for public input at the public safety committee of city council on October sixteen.
Alright, thank you. Our next agenda item is proposed subdivision variance.
This is subdivision variance request uh requests from chapter eighteen, article four, section eighteen dash forty, paragraph A of the subdivision regulations of the city of North Charleston regarding for the properties addressed at forty-nine fifty-two Rivers Avenue and forty-nine ninety-four Rivers Avenue. Charleston County TMS numbers four seven two one six zero zero two one four two one six. Variants is as we just read is for varying lot width for the properties addressed uh forty-nine fifty-two Rivers, forty-nine ninety-four Rivers Avenue. These are the properties we were just discussing. Uh here along Fuller Street uh off of Rivers Avenue. These are B two general business, subject property, the applicant is proposing subdivide the lot into twelve single-family residential lots and eleven of those with the non-conforming to the R one single-family residential lot standards. Um it's a here. The preliminary plat depicts the subdivision lots with a width averaging thirty feet. This plat also shows the residual lots with frontage on Rivers Avenue averaging a total point nine two acres which would remain zone B two general business. Here residual that would not be that full area because of our potential not that full area. Um the average lot size, the single-family residential in the Ferndale neighborhood averages forty-six point one one feet and forty-five point nine feet along Edmonton Street and sixty-three point two eight feet along Fuller Street. Staff's recommendation of the request is denial. Subject properties are currently split-zoned B two general business and R one single-family residential. The variance, if granted, would be contingent upon the rezoning of the portion of the parcels from B two general business to R one single-family residential. These parcels, as they are zoned, support development of the parcels, single-family homes, rear B two zoning. The parcels also currently support commercial uses along Rivers Avenue. As staff requires this to grant the variance for non-parenting. Staff recommends denial of the requested subdivision variance. Please note, should commission wish to approve the subdivision variance, it must be contingent upon like the city council of the proposed rezoning of the parcel discussed items. Just finished the discuss.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
So approval of this would would be contingent upon approval of council?
Yes, and your recommendation is a recommendation. So council still could potentially approve the the rezoning of that portion to R one from the B two. However, we would ask that if you choose to grant this variance, that it is contingent upon that happening because it doesn't make sense to
Right.
to another place.
Yeah, so they submitted an application for a variance from the R one standards.
Right.
So for that portion that's B two, they would have to submit a different variance for that, so something has to happen first.
Good, thank you.
And also, are we not required to follow uh to grant a variance? It must meet all five of the the um criteria.
Correct, yeah.
And from what I'm looking at, it does not. I.
Correct, yes, they have a good.
Especially in in terms of the uh comprehensive plan.
Right, there um applicants or variance is supposed to be granted for parcels with a unique hardship that being developed or something similar.
Are there other questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So staff's recommendation of denial.
Is there a second?
A second, that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we deny the requested subdivision variance and and make that recommendation to council. Are you ready for discussion? Hearing none, ready to vote?
Uh.
Is there something?
Is she permitted to speak for this just for the record?
Oh, yes, did you want to call the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, in one public hearing, sorry. I actually forgot about that, I'm sorry.
I it's the same, it's the same thing I said earlier. There's nothing changed.
Okay.
But they do.
But if you want to, if you want to co- you have that right now, don't don't.
Right, no, there, no, it's the same that I said earlier, like we're just, we're just trying to get single-family homes in there, you know. We do a lot in North Charleston, so single-family homes that are affordable in that neighborhood is just, you know, a good thing.
Thank you, and I do apologize for overlooked. Alright, are we ready to vote? Is that where we were?
Okay, the the motion on the floor is a uh vote of denial, not a recommendation. It would be a denial of the variance. Uh Mister Monti.
Aye.
Mister Bellamy.
Aye.
Mister Sharp.
Aye.
Mister Doohan.
Aye.
Mister Crawford.
Aye.
And Miss Reed.
Aye.
Uh that motion carries unanimously and the variance is denied.
Alright, um please take note of the actions taken by council regarding our recommendations at its office meetings. Do any of the commissioners have comments before we prepare to adjourn? Staff, anything you need to tell us?
Do you have anything?
But you know, I did get a card um regarding the training that used to do from the municipal association, I believe it is, I'm telling it.
Yeah, uh they have slightly updated their minor modification. Uh their recommendation for the trainings have to be fully approved by the NASC. There were some outside agencies that could provide some of that continuing and that you know, just kinda got by just doing it and submitting. Um what we're going to do in the department is uh do a better job of sharing those training opportunities with the board members, uh making sure that they meet uh NASC's requirements. Uh try to get you as many free training opportunities. Everybody is required to do minimum of three hours of continuing education. Uh the new members uh should have gotten a link to the six hours worth of training. That just has to be completed within the first year of uh being appointed. Last year's season, after that, uh it work and as you work through those free webinars and you get your certificates, please send it to us so that we can keep track of that. Uh so that we're staying on top of our requirements uh as well, so. Uh thank you, Miss Reed, for bringing that up. I apologize. Uh I know that as uh we kind of done a great job sharing uh those opportunities.
The 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 postcard came to my home.
Uh if you're registered.
If you're a registered member.
Well, I've been to so many of their
Yeah, you're probably on a mailing list somewhere. Um we got like five postcards
Yeah.
in the mail to the office, so um but yes, we will, we'll definitely do a better job of getting those out to everyone so that you have an opportunity to then choose things that you might be interested in. Um did we print off the um what we'd also like to do is provide some uh light reading for you all. Uh we're gonna try to pick articles that are relevant to things that are happening within the city uh and provide you with some opportunities to learn a little bit about the things that we're doing. Um so we're gonna start providing within the packets an article uh monthly for you guys to see. Uh.
Remember now, we just got through with that kind of reading, that whole comprehensive.
Oh, yeah, and we're and what we're going to be.
Ah, it's a tie.
But this is fun, fun reading.
This this is gonna be much more interesting, I promise. Uh you know, land use laws, zoning uh rewrites, all the, all the wonderful and joyful things that we're gonna be doing in the next couple of years.
Accessory dwelling units.
Bus rapid transit lines.
We have a few picked out.
What is a U D O? Uh so you're in a fight development ordinance and we're barreling headlong into that process, so uh and you're, you all are informed about what our goals are and as the city and uh you know, as planning staff and uh the better you will be able to make your recommendations to council to you know, make the right decisions for the people of the city, so. Uh we're just trying to provide you with additional input and information so that your background is more grounded within uh the goals and objectives of the city.
Would you all pers- prefer to receive just like a link to articles or would you like it more in the, printed in the packets?
Art.
No, please don't.
Yeah, I'm fine with just a link.
Y'all prefer.
No, just a link.
Yeah, just to send me the link so I can have it.
Okay.
Excellent.
I think that probably be easier than 'cause I I'm not sure, you can print from New York Times and stuff or whatever.
But you actually have it, thinking about the subscription.
Oh.
Okay, is there anything else to come before this group before we adjourn? Then we stand adjourned.